Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 7th Board Meeting for the Nash County Board of Education. I will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are joined by Kyle Perkins. No, I'm sorry. Forgive me. So if everyone was standing with me, we'll decide the pledge of allegiance. On three, two, one.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Did a great job. I'll start with a motion to adopt the agenda, please. Second motion was made for the record by Board Member Thomas Bullock, seconded by Dr. Chavis. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our last meeting in August. Motion made by Vice Chair Dunton, seconded by Dr. Chavis. All in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known. Motion approved. Recognition, Dr. Evans.
Here we go. So, good evening. We're going to recognize something a little different tonight, so you'll, when you hear this, you'll see. So, on July 19, 2023, in the midst of summer scholars and other summer events taking place at our schools in the summer, around 12:30, the skies darkened, danger loomed, and a tornado dragged through the northern end of our district. Four individuals we are recognizing this evening stood as pillars of strength, exemplifying the true spirit of heroism. This was not a drill. It was a real-life tornado lockdown, and their actions during those critical moments showcased their dedication to the safety and well-being of our students. Allow me to introduce the recipients of the Nash County Public Schools Hero Award. First, we have Allison Williams, the Principal of Red Oak Elementary. Come on down. Next, we have, we honor Chad Horner, Assistant Principal at Red Oak Middle School, Tracy Spence, Assistant Principal, and last, but certainly not least, Bautista Rodriguez, the SRO Officer, I don't think he's here tonight, Nash County Sheriff's Deputy, men and women soccer coach at Northern Nash High School, he is also the SRO, that's correct. As we stand here today, we honor these heroes with the Nash County Public Schools Hero Award. So this is a small token of our immense gratitude for their selflessness and bravery. Their actions remind us that heroes don't wear capes. They walk among us, often in our schools, and their impact is immeasurable. Thank you for your dedication, sir. Thank you. Thank Heather Louise.
So, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're presenting an inaugural award that's new for Nash County Public Schools. So today, this evening, we're gathering to recognize and celebrate an exceptional member of our Nash County Public Schools family. For an incredible 35 years, this staff member has dedicated herself to not only one role, but two crucial roles within our community, as a school bus driver and a cafeteria staff member. Her impact on our student reaches far beyond the confines of a bus or cafeteria. She has touched the lives of thousands of students with her dedication, kindness, and a heart that is always open. Many of her students fondly refer to her as more of an just school staff member. She's become a cherished member of our extended school family. She's a confidant, a mentor, and a friend. Her impact is immeasurable, and the love and respect that all the students she has served over the past 35 years in the Southern Nash end of the county is untouchable. Often, she's referred to as Mama Jones. The one thing that sets her apart is her talent for making the best giant cookies. They were legendary. You can ask Julius Peppers. Among the staff and students for years. But it's not just the cookies. It's the warmth and the care that she infuses to everything that she does. In her, we have an embodiment of dedication, compassion, and a true spirit of a school community. She's not just an employee. She's family, and she's family to thousands of students that have walked the halls of the schools in the Southern Nash end of the county. And she's known, and she's loved. Ms. Barbara Jones, will you please come down here and accept on behalf of Nash County Public Schools the Lifetime of Service Award?
Now, we've reached the public input segment of our meeting. Each month, a part of at least one regularly scheduled board meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comments. A sign-up sheet will be available in the Communications Office for any individual or group to indicate their desire to address the board. Disruptions by any person or persons of a public meeting will be subject to action in accordance with General Statute 143-318.17. If anyone has further questions, please refer to Nash County Public Schools Policy Number 2310. The first individual who was signed up for today is Kyle Perkins. Kyle Perkins. All right, Alice Davis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Alice Hunt Davis. I live at 211 Madison Street, Rocky Mountain, on the Edgecombe County side. My telephone number, I am the grandparent of two beautiful girls. They have been with me since June of this year. Prior to the school opening for this school session, I went to numerous schools trying to find out what district or what school they would need to attend. Nevertheless, I ended up at Rocky Mountain Middle School, and this was for the middle school student, and Rocky Mountain High School would be for the high school student. On the week prior to school opening, I went to the middle school, and I was informed that I had to complete an enrollment application online. I immediately did so. They asked numerous questions. One of the questions in which I'm here today was if I'm the custodial guardian. I am the legal grandparent. These children come with, stay with me all the time. They are with me because of an economic condition of the mother, who they have lived with for all their lives. Well, all the questions that they asked, if you didn't have that information, the application states that you have 30 days to get. Nevertheless, on the 28th, when I went to the middle school to enroll my granddaughter, I was told she could not attend because I was not the custodial parent, and I didn't have anything in writing. We went round and about that day. I was informed that a letter would be sent to the mother, who currently lives in Wake County. We waited all day for that letter to come, and it never did. It was a back-and-forth thing. The mother said, "You are the grandparents. You're the biological grandparents. Why in the world do I need it?" Well, I said, "This is not what I'm wanting. This is what the school is asking for." Oh, gosh, please, let me finish. Please.
However, you may follow Superintendent directly.
And I didn't know it was a time limit. Do I would have jumped right into it? I didn't know that, and it wasn't announced. Can we make an exception? Please.
I think you allow the adoptive parent to raise your concern, but I'm assuming it's about reassignment transfer. So you, I think that would probably.
It's the non-custodial form that I'm here to. Sarah, my grandkids still left school.
Thank you.
May I say one other thing? I was promised by Dr. Ferrer's office that he was going to return a call to me on the 30th. As of today, I still have not received the call.
Ma'am, that will change as five seconds ago. That will change. You can sit down in confidence and know that he will be contacting you, and he will do whatever he can to make sure that your grandbabies will be well taken care of in our school system. Okay?
Is there any way I can meet with the board after the meeting?
May I say, yes. Ma'am, feel free to call to any, at any time.
Miss, here again, I've called. I understand. And I've done that without return calls. Thank you. And Jonathan, please, glad to see you again. I graduated with you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are on item number seven, our business item. Donations.
Dear Board Members, please accept this request for the following donation. Bailey Elementary School received the following donations. Nom Knights Coastal Plane Chapter donated $700 to be used for the back tax pay program. Dean Edwards donated $500 to be used for the PBIS program. Cooper's Elementary School received the following donation. Cooper's Volunteer Fire Department and Rescue Auxiliary donated $500 to be used for supplies for students and staff. Nashville Elementary School received the following donation. Clayton Homes donated book bags and school supplies valued at $2,500 to be used for students in need. This needs approval.
Now, Chairman, I make the motion that we accept these donations with great appreciation to them.
Motion made by Dr. Chavis, seconded by Board Member Thomas Bullock. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye. Motion carried.
Yes.
We did. I am so sorry. I'll take it back. We're reverting back to public input. Number three is Mr. Ben James present. I apologize.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Like, take a few minutes. I'll try to get it in. Like to address, I'm sorry, my name is Ben James. I'd like to address testing personally. I'd like for the district to consider taking advantage of an option to move assessments away from the day after a holiday or a Monday. Having younger students, it takes them a day or two to get back from a weekend, especially a long weekend, to get their mindset back into school. So it's a little harder for them to be proficient in their assessment when they're coming back off of a long weekend. I think simply one day would be enough just for them to get their mindset back into school after a long weekend. And I'd appreciate your consideration in the future about that. My next is busing. I was prompted and responded to enroll my son for busing back at the early part of August, I think it was August 7th. I enlisted him through the email that was sent out. Got to open house. He was not listed on busing, so the lady was nice enough to fill out another busing form. Start of school, still no busing, and no communication back. Again, during that week, it was addressed again. The school said they'd follow up with it to try to get him on busing. School has been most cooperative in trying to do that. Still didn't happen, so again, my wife sent that Wednesday, sent a voicemail with the transportation specialist, no return call. She also filled out the form online again to get him registered. I sent an email through the busing app that y'all have, and that was last week. I've still not received an email back. I left an email and my phone number. At this point, there's been zero communication about busing issues. I don't like to be ugly. I don't know if it's somebody's incompetent, lazy, or we got a busing driver shortage. It could be any of them, but the fact that there's been zero communication about busing issues leads me to think the worst, and I hear my three minutes. If y'all have any questions, I'll be around. Thank you for your time.
And I apologize again, Mr. James, for the omission, okay? Thanks. All right, so now we are at our personnel recommendations. Mrs. Wallace.
Good evening again, Chair Dr. Washington, Vice Chair Mr. Dutton, present board members. The personnel reports have been reviewed and discussed. On behalf of Superintendent Ellis, your approval is requested at this time.
Personnel recommendations are presented. Is there a second? Okay, motion moved by Board Member Edwards for the record, seconded by Board Member Thomas Bullock. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Testing and accountability update, Ms. Davis.
Good evening. I stand before you with much enthusiasm to share our testing data for the 2223 school. As a reminder, do you have the presentation? So I'll begin talking. So as a reminder, I do want to share with you that schools are assigned school performance grades of A, B, C, D, and F. Low-performing schools are those schools that receive a D or F and a growth score of met or not met. If a school receives a D or an F, but they exceed growth, it is not designated as a low-performing school. School performance grades are comprised of 80% performance and 20% growth. A district is designated as low-performing when more than 50% of the schools in the district is low-performing. And there are some things that are taken into consideration when school performance grades are determined. Those things are EOGs, math, Math 1, EOC, EL Progress, ACT work keys, and Math Course Rigor. Tremaine, do you have it? So if you would pick up on slide two. If you go back to the previous slide, I wanted to show some trend data that shows our performance as a district from 2014 up into this point. But on the next slide that's showing, I thought it was important that I show you where we were as a district pre-COVID. So in 2018, 2019, we had four schools that exceeded growth. In 1920, of course, we know COVID hit. And then in 2021, we received performance scores, but we did not receive growth data. Then in 2021, which was two years ago, we continued in an upward bound, so we were making improvements. We had eight schools that exceeded growth. Now, fast forward to this school year. We had 10 schools to exceed growth, five schools that met growth, and five schools that did not meet growth. I think the most important thing that I want to share with you is that nine of our schools improved in letter grades, which means we had schools to move from Cs to Bs. We had schools to maintain As, and we had several schools that moved from Ds to Cs. And Tar River Academy was declining, and it moved this year to maintaining. Next slide. No, you can go to the next slide. Just go ahead and skip. How do we rank against the other 115 districts in our state? So in 2122, we were 97 out of 115 school districts. This year, we are 78 out of 115 school districts. We are not satisfied with being ranked 78, but we do want to celebrate that we did move up 19 slots. So that shows that we're moving in the right direction. Next slide. During our board retreat, we had, we shared with you that we met most of our goals, but during that time, there were some goals that we could not determine if we had met. And it was because we had not received this data from the state. So we can check off the fact that we exited low-performance status. We increased the number of schools that exceeded growth, and we increased the number of schools that received a performance grade of C or higher. Next slide. Most importantly, we've been working diligently ever since I have been named the Assistant Superintendent of Academic Services and Accountability. We believed that we could do it, so we did it, and we have exited the low-performance status. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Just due to me and y'all, and the stuff that was in the team that put out the plan and made this happen. But there's one thing we have forgot. We turned up celebration earlier today. We didn't thank. I mean, we need to thank teachers, teachers assistants, the principals, the bus drivers, and get these kids to school cafeteria workers and everything. They're part of this plan.
Absolutely. 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 You're welcome. Anything else? Thank you.
All right, Policy Committee, report. Mr. Morris, thank you, Madam James. The Policy Committee has four policy proposals to stand, to stand, to thank you to recommend for a final reading for tonight. Those policies are Policy 1540, News Media Relations, Policy Number 16315, Drivers, Policy Number 1630, Insurance Security and Safety Services, and Policy 1640, Safety, 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 Safety. All right, the motion made by Board Member Dunton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye. Motion carried.
Madam Chair, we have two additional policies that we would like to recommend for a first read tonight, and that would be Policy Number 508, Automated Phone and Text Messaging, and also. Automated Phone and Text Messaging, and also Policy 16402, Participation by Historically Underutilized Businesses. And if you will note, we made some changes to Policy 16402 at the committee level this evening. So I move that we approve the policy as it is now online to lay on the table for 30 days.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Board Member Evil, seconded by Dr. Chavis. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed, same side. Motion carried. Thank you. In the absence of Mr. Sharp, I'll report on the Administrative Services and Operations Committee. There were no action items. There were two items for information only, the RFP process for legal representation and the demerger update. Moving on to item number 10, Student Support Services and Operations Committee, Mr. Edwards.
We met. We only had two items that were for information only, with transportation and a presentation from Chief Winstead National Cledi.
Thank you for that. And then moving to item number 11, Academic Services and Accountability Committee, Mrs. Thomas Bullock.
So we met, and we had two items that were information only, and we had a third that was an action item, the Alternative School Accountability Model. So I would like to move that we accept that item as presented.
Second.
All right, motion made by Board Member Thomas Bullock to accept the Alternative School Accountability Model, and seconded by Board Member Gray. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye. Opposed, same side. Motion carried, and we're at the superintendent's report.
So I'll get Mr. James for stealing my thunder. So we want to make sure we thank all staff members associated with that kind of public school because we're at a little and that's a great, that's great news for all of us, all of the community, students, staff, everyone. So thank you. I got a great team, so thank you, thank. But we are not anything low performing status is not our goal, so we're going to aim higher. And next year, we hope we're going to be in the middle of the pack, so hopefully we'll get there. So thank you. I do have some dates I will share with you. September 12th, we have the groundbreaking ceremony for Northern Nash Fieldhouse. On the 19th of September, our first demerger community meeting rolling forward together. We'll start at 5:30. More information will be coming out, but it will be on our website. Conversation is with staff and students affected by the demerger. And on the 26th, we'll have our curriculum night at 6:00 PM. That'll be at Arlington Baptist Church. And the 22nd, Edgecombe Public Schools will be having their second demerger forum. That'll be at DS Johnson at 5:30.
Thank you, Dr. Ellis. Now for the chair's report. Welcome to the 2023-2024 school year. As we enter the new school year, my hope is that you have had an enjoyable summer and that you're excited about the return to school. We accomplished great things during the 2022-2023 school year, and I'm optimistic that the momentum will continue into the 2023-2024 school year. As we begin this academic year, it is important to emphasize that it takes the collective commitment from everyone to achieve student success. I would like to encourage parents to continue to actively engage in your child's education this school year. If you're not engaged, it's never too late to start. Doing whatever you can, when you can, has the propensity to make a difference in the lives of others. Please know that our teachers, administrators, and staff are here to support you and your child. As always, thank you for being the best part of Nash County Public Schools and have a phenomenal school year. Upcoming meeting. Committee meetings will be Monday, September 25th at 5:00 PM. Our October work session will be Monday, October 2nd at 5:00 PM. And our October board meeting, the board meeting, excuse me, will be Monday, October 2nd at 6:30 PM. And if there's no further business to come before the board today, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Board Member Evil, seconded by Dr. Chavis. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye. All right. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Have a great evening.